Good evening. I’m calling this regular meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:00 PM. All members of the Town Council are present, and present live for the first time in over a year, really. And for our first order of business, I’d ask us all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in this open, third year of justice.
Thank you. Before we get into announcements, I wanted to make my own announcement. With us tonight is our new Chief of Police, Chief Mike Coria. Chief, could you just stand up so everybody can see you? He is joining us, and on August 2nd, we will do an official swearing-in for Chief Coria at the Barrington Public Library, which will be air-conditioned. So, I’d encourage you all to attend that. It’ll be a lot cooler, and it’ll be in the library auditorium. Thanks, Chief. Welcome aboard. I’d like to turn it over to our Town Manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through the rest of the announcements. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Victory Day is celebrated in Rhode Island, it’ll be Monday, August 9th, Town offices and the library will be closed. And the same thing for Labor Day, which is September 6th, offices and the library will be closed. Because Labor Day is on a Monday, the Town Council meeting for the month of September will move to September 13th, right here, in a cooler room, at 7:00 PM. Tree planting and removal, as we announce every month, year-to-date, from June to June, 83 trees have been removed and 93 trees have been planted, so we’re on the positive side. Speaking of trees, National Grid is in town, and they’re beginning a tree trimming program to help with our power outages. They’re doing the assessments right now, and they’ll be in and about town clearing trees that are impacting our power lines. On our Town Hall webpage, we have two virtual suggestion boxes. We’re looking for residents to give us some suggestions. One is for the American Rescue Plan inputs. The Town of Barrington will receive approximately $4.7 million over the next two years. The utilization of those funds is restricted, but we’re looking for residents to give us some ideas as to how they’d like to see that money utilized. In addition, as you know, we have purchased or have signed a purchase-and-sale agreement for the Carmelite Monastery, and we’re looking for suggestions in another virtual suggestion box for suggestions as to how we should utilize that property. So your participation would be greatly appreciated. That’s all I have, Mr. President.
Thanks, Jim. So, before we get to the consent agenda, I wanted to give an opportunity for my fellow councilors to highlight anything in the consent agenda that they wanted to draw attention to. They can, of course, pull anything from the consent agenda if they want, but in this way, we can highlight those things, and unless there’s something that you didn’t want to vote on, you wanted to oppose, we could do a clean vote. But just give my fellow councilmembers that opportunity. Please, go ahead. Vice President Hum.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to point out briefly for Agenda Item Number Four, there’s a resignation under the Economic Development Commission from Dick Wilber. If we could, I’d like to reject that, but that’s not fair to Mr. Wilber or his family. He’s been on the Economic Development Commission since it was created. He’s been the Secretary of that commission, which is a tough job, because he takes detailed notes, he has to revise them after, he has to submit them several times to the Town, as Mr. Sisto knows. And he just, he gave great input, so I want to thank Mr. Wilber for his service, and I’m sorry to see him go, but I just wanted to call that out.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
I have a couple of questions on reports. It won’t affect how I vote, so I could do those now.
Sure, go ahead.
So, on the HR report, I was curious if you could speak to how much of the increase in employees is related to no longer being shut down as we were, and how much is increase in general operations and staff?
Most of those are part-time seasonal workers that we didn’t use last summer, with the library shutdown in particular. With the exception of the two new employees at Public Works Department, there are no additional ones that I’m aware of.
Okay, thank you. And the other is on the planning report. It’s great that we got the grant for Harold Gibbs Woods, and I was just curious if we could hear a little about what’s going to happen there, what work will be done.
The intention is to connect Harold Gibbs Woods to the rest of the trail system along the Warren River. This grant in particular will be used to open up a roadway, dirt roadway, into a small parking area where people can park and then utilize the property.
And are we still able to potentially carve out a buildable lot to sell, or will the work turn the full thing into...
We haven’t looked at that. I imagine we should, if there is a usable lot that we can carve out to get back some of the money. We’ll take care of it. We’ll take a look at that.
Anything else?
No, that’s all.
Any other member of the Council want to highlight anything? I’d just thank Ms. Lily Lucier for pointing out some bicycle safety concerns. This is a sixth grader who wrote in about concern that she had to, she asked that we address with some shrubs that were forcing folks into the road, and we took care of that for her, and I thank her for doing so. So, with that in mind, we’re going on to the consent agenda. These are items that are usually non-controversial, that are routinely passed by the Council, and they’ll be enacted by one motion. There won’t be a separate discussion on these items unless a Council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event, we’ll remove that item from the consent agenda, vote on the remainder, and then consider that item after we do that. Is there anything from the consent agenda that we want to remove?
I’d like to remove correspondence.
You want to remove correspondence, okay. Anything else? Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of Item 10, as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, Counsel Breyer.
Yes, so there’s one item I’d like to have removed from the correspondence, and that’s the letter from La Police. It doesn’t appear to be correspondence to the Council, and it’s a card that disparagingly calls out a member of the public, and I’d like to just have it removed and not part of the official record.
Okay. Counsel Breyer would like to remove the letter or the card from Karen Lou La Police from North Kingston, on the grounds that it’s not to the Council and that it is disparaging to a member of our community. Amy, I’m always kind of struggling with this, because we, the question is whether we can remove something or whether we have to, if we get the, my understanding was that if the correspondence came into the Town, we put it on the agenda?
This is Amy Goins, Assistant Town Solicitor. I’m not clear on whether the practice is only to include on the Council agenda items that were specifically addressed to the Council, or items that are addressed to the Town in general. I see the envelope is addressed to Town Manager James Cunha, and it says, “Dear Mr. Cunha.” So, if the Council’s practice is to consider this as Council correspondence, you can do with it what you want. I’m not sure that it has to be, I mean, I wouldn’t consider it significant, because I didn’t think, are you going to take any action other than receive and file?
No, we, not on any of them.
My conversations with Mike Rosillo is that as long as we are consistent, month-to-month, in how we deal with the correspondence, then we’re on safe grounds. So, with the Council’s direction, we will keep correspondence only to the Town Council in the future correspondence.
Okay. All right, so that, if that’s, if we’re all comfortable with that. So, do I hear a motion to acknowledge the correspondence with the exception of...
Sorry, there’s two other correspondence pieces I’d like to discuss.
Okay, go ahead.
The letter to the editor that was, although it was published in the paper, it was really directed toward us regarding doing research on Carmelite and what we do to develop there. I know during the announcements, the manager shared that there’s a survey online, and I would just like to discuss what more we can do to research what the community would like, and how we can ensure that what is built is going to serve the needs of the community. Many seniors aren’t as active online, and they’re the ones looking for housing, and so I’d just like to hear what we can do to engage the public more.
Okay. We can put that on a future agenda to discuss that one. Anything else?
And the letter from Friends of Barrington Public Library. We’ve had a few correspondences over the past couple of months along this theme, and I was curious to learn from the Solicitor what it is that we can do, and then discuss if there is anything we’d like to do.
I would caution the Solicitor not to, I mean, we want to make sure that any advice that we’ve gotten remains attorney-client privileged, so I’m not sure how much he can answer at that point.
All right, so with the letter from La Police removed, I’ll move to accept and file the correspondence?
Is there a second? I’ll second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that takes care of our consent agenda. The next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on the DEI Committee. We’re going to be interviewing a number of folks from the DEI Committee, but one of the things that we didn’t talk about, unless my memory fails me, is terms. And typically, we set up committees so that they have staggered terms, so that we don’t end up having everybody’s term end at the same time, where we have to decide between either appointing, reappointing some, a couple of people, but not all 11. So, that’s why, that’s one of the reasons I put that on there. The other reason I put that on there is to discuss whether we should, as a Council, appoint the Chair and Vice Chair of this committee. My own view on that is that we should do so. I think this is an important committee, and I’d like to make sure that we, as a Council, start them off in the right direction. But I’ll listen to members of the Council on both points, whether we should stagger and whether we should appoint Chair and Vice Chair. Does anyone want to be heard on that? Counsel Breyer?
I agree with staggering. There are two notes. One is the proposed stagger is only for 10 spots, so we’d have to adjust that to the 11. But the other is, I was curious if the one-year spots and the two-year spots, when those seats are up, would they then be reappointed or a new seat for three years, or would it remain that it’s one-year spots, two-year spots, and three-year spots?
No, well, my view is that it should be three years thereafter. That’s how we’ve done it in the past.
That’s the way we do it on other committees. It’s just starting out so that we get them staggered, and then they all are reappointed to three-year terms, and that will keep the flow going.
Otherwise, in year six, they’d all be up, so. As far as appointing a Chair and Vice Chair, I think, I think it would be premature to do so, before the committee has met and discussed, kind of come together. We haven’t, we haven’t discussed with the applicants whether, you know, they didn’t know to apply to be Chair or to present themselves in that way, and I think it might be good to allow this committee to come together and discuss among themselves what they want from leadership and how they’d like to proceed.
Any other member of the Council want to be heard on that?
I agree on the staggered terms and the way that was sketched out. As far as the Chair, that may be the point, and I could see us relinquishing that authority over time. I question whether there would be a disadvantage in not having someone who was truly coordinating the discussion, which is what the Chair’s function would be, to get the committee started. And so, I would just raise that as one thing. If you go into a brand-new committee with brand-new people without some level of guidance from someone who is, whose job is to organize the agenda and guide the discussion, that could be less productive. And so, that would be my concern with not appointing a Chair, at least to begin that process. I could certainly see relinquishing that, that power over time at some point.
I would agree with Counsel Castell on that. In terms of relinquishing the power, I don’t think it’s a Chair, the Chair position is something we should continue to appoint. They should be self-governing body, but I think to get everybody going and as a liaison, as a co- liaison for the committee, I think it would be helpful to have some sort of leadership. Also, I noticed we have a lot of absences of people who’ve applied, and so I believe we will not be completely filling the committee until September, in which case I think we don’t want to wait another month to then have them take action and move forward. So, I would be in support of the staggered, as well as the appointment.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to say one thing to that, maybe I’m getting ahead of myself, but on the next agenda item, I just encourage the applicants to indicate if that’s something they’d even be interested in, because being a Chair of a committee is a significant amount of work. Being a Vice Chair, which is also noted here, is a significant amount of work. So that would be helpful if folks, even at the outset, could at least identify that. Not prejudicing anybody who is not interested in being a Chair, because it’s not a role for everyone. People want to volunteer in all sorts of ways, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Mr. President, if I could just ask the Council, it’s very difficult to hear with the fans going in the room and with those that are masked, so if you could pay particular attention to get really close to your mic when you speak.
Sure. Sure, and I will project. Jacob, please go ahead.
So if we will be appointing a Chair, if we could appoint it to a one-year term, so that then, after a year, the committee itself can elect their Chair, I could support that.
Councilmembers?
I would support that. I think that makes sense, especially if we have reappointments taking place after a year.
So, I would just recommend that we, if we’re, it’s fine to set up a schedule to do it, but one year is going to disappear very quickly. So, I would suggest that we do two years for the first year, first appointment of the Chair. That’s my view. Rob, please go ahead.
One additional thought on that is, you know, if the Council were to appoint a Chair tonight, you know, one thing that might be good for the committee itself is to create some sort of bylaws in terms of what its goals and procedures are, and that could be included within the bylaws. And I agree, one year does sound too short. I wouldn’t want to go over two years, though, if there was a Chair for two years, but I’d almost propose that we leave it up to the committee to make that determination, and perhaps we could set it for a year, you know, subject to the committee’s further discussion, and they can, if they vote to make it two years, and they vote to make it two years, or whatever it might be.
Anyone else on that? So, I’m going to make a motion on the staggered terms, so that we can kind of get through that, Mary, it’ll be based on the Town Manager’s comment. I recommend that we have four members appointed to a three-year term expiring on July 31, 2024, that we have three members appointed to a two-year term expiring July 31, 2023, and that we have four members appointed to a one-year term expiring July 31, 2022. I also recommend that, I also make a motion that we, that the Chair and Vice Chair be in the three-year term periods, be selected from that group. That’s my motion.
I’ll second that.
Motion’s been made and seconded. Further discussion?
I have a question. I support the motion. I have a question just about alternates, given that there are two alternates. I would propose that the alternates be within the two-year term, so that if they’re on the committee for a year, they don’t miss their opportunity to become a full member by virtue of being an alternate. But I’m not sold on that. I’m raising it for discussion, that we give consideration to what the alternate does.
Sure, so the, for folks who don’t know, we create alternate positions. Those folks participate in all debates and all discussions, but they don’t vote unless there is a member missing. So, we’ll have a first alternate. If one person on the committee is missing, that first alternate is able to vote. If two people are missing, two of the full members are missing, then both alternates will be able to vote. So that’s why we do that. It helps with making sure that we have quorum, when sometimes that’s hard to do. So you’re suggesting that they be placed in the two-year terms?
I’m not suggesting it for purposes of the motion. I’m suggesting it for discussion, because I want to see what other folks think in terms of the treatment of the alternates. I raised two years, only just to give those folks an opportunity. Again, I’m not sold on that. A year also makes sense, because they will come up for another interview a year later. So, more just for discussion purposes, I want to see what people think about the two versus one year, even the three-year term.
Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I like the idea of an extended term for an alternate. I think you want to make them, I think the difficulty with being an alternate is always that you don’t always know how, you know, you don’t feel like you have the power to vote, and therefore, even though you’re encouraged to contribute fully in discussions, you don’t do so. If you have a longer tenure, I think you’re more invested, and I saw, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Well, if you want to move that as an amendment to my motion, I will accept that amendment. That is, that the alternates would be among those members appointed to two-year terms in the first instance, and then it would turn into three-year terms thereafter. Do you accept that as a...
Absolutely, seconded, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mary, do you have that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next motion, I’ll make a motion that we appoint, that the Town Council appoint the Chair and Vice Chair of the DEI Committee for a one-year term, for the first one-year term for those members. Is there a second?
Could we clarify that that would not necessarily be, the Council may conclude that it needs another half a year. I mean, there wouldn’t be necessarily exclusively one year, and then terminating its authority, the Council would then have to act to relinquish that authority, or would that, how do we interpret that?
We could do it so that it was self-executing, so that after the first year, the DEI Committee could decide. I’m certainly willing to live with it that way. I just feel like that one year disappears very quickly. Anybody who’s been, you know, Chair of a committee, that comes and goes before you’ve started anything, and then you may end up with a different... Well, I suppose we can leave it to the DEI Committee, because they’ll see whether it’s working out. So, no, I think it ought to be that it’s a one-year term, and then thereafter, it’s up to the DEI Committee.
Okay. And actually, if I just comment on that, I agree with how you outline that. What I would suggest is so that whoever the first year’s Chair is, has that opportunity to potentially have a second year if the DEI, so, you know, happens to write it in their bylaws, that it not be self-executing with respect to the current Chair and Vice Chair as nominated by the Council, and that, I don’t know the best way to say that, but that, you know, thereafter, the DEI Committee will choose the terms of its Chair and Vice Chair, including those who are selected by the Council. Something along those lines. I know that’s not the way we would say it, but...
I make a motion, let me start over, and maybe I can include it, and you tell me if I’ve gotten it right.
Sure.
I make a motion that the Town Council appoint the Chair and Vice Chair of the DEI Committee to serve one-year terms. Thereafter, the Chair and Vice Chair will be selected by the DEI Committee.
Did I get that makes sense to me?
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motions were made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I imagine if the committee establishes bylaws that would be somewhat inconsistent with that but serves its purpose, that we wouldn’t stand in the way of it. If, so if, for example, the committee decides on bylaws that they’d like three-year terms for the Chair, for example, we wouldn’t say, “Well, no, you have to vote after a year.”
The bylaws would have to be consistent with what the Council directs, and I think that potential bylaw might not be consistent, because the Chair is a person who occupies a seat, so I think you said the Chair in, did you say that the Chair shall be initially from within the two-year or three-year terms?
We, I said that they would serve, that was sort of before we did the one-year Chair position, but I said that they would be among the people in the three years, who would serve for three years initially.
Okay, and initially, the Chair and Vice Chair get one year...
One-year term as Chair and Vice Chair, but they would remain members.
Okay, I just, I’d have to sketch it out on paper, but I could imagine potentially that the Chair position, the Chair’s term might not line up with the term of the person occupying that. So, I will assure you, the Solicitor’s Office will assist in drafting the bylaws, and we will, we will make sure it’s consistent with what the Council directs.
Okay, I understand. So the issue is, you don’t want a Chair’s term to extend past their term?
Yeah, I think setting an initial term for the Chair is fine, but just as to the question of, can the DEI Committee thereafter, you know, make its own bylaws and potentially tinker with that, I think the answer is yes, as long as we can ensure that it’s consistent with how the seats are, and the terms are supposed to line up. So we’ll work on that with them.
And would we need to approve bylaws? It’s been a long time since we’ve had to do that for a committee.
To my knowledge, the Council does not approve bylaws. Each committee has the power to adopt its own bylaws, provided they’re consistent with the intent of the committee’s charge, as authorized by the Council or applicable statute or ordinance.
Okay. Okay. So, do we remember the motion? The, to answer your question, Counsel Breyer, they would design their own bylaws with the assistance of the Solicitor, and we’ll make sure that it kind of works the right way, so that we don’t extend past each other. Motion’s been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Great. So, the next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments, and I’m going to suggest, because it’s a little warm, and I will be able to get some folks through more quickly if we do the DEI Committee last, and we’ll get through the, there are only a few interviews for Resiliency and Energy. There’s one, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Dunn is not here. There's one, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Dunn is not here, so we don't have to do that. And then for the Zoning Board of Review, we have two. And then those folks, if they want to, can leave, and we'll move on to the DEI Committee. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So for Resiliency and Energy, Jonathan Mellor, Mr. Mellor, please come forward. Good evening. Thanks for coming in, and thanks for coming to this hot room. Can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to Resiliency and Energy?
Of course. Yes. Yeah, so my name is Dr. Mellor. I'm a faculty of UMass Dartmouth, Civil and Environmental Engineering Department. And as part of that role, I teach a wide variety of classes.
Yes, okay. So yes, as I mentioned, I'm on the faculty of UMass Dartmouth in the Civil and Environmental Engineering Committee, Committee, Department. And as part of that role, I teach a wide variety of classes in relation to environmental engineering, water resources, and climate change and climate resiliency. I just started at UMass this last September. Prior to that, I was on the faculty of UConn, also in their Civil and Environmental Engineering Department for about five and a half years. What I think I bring to the committee is quite a bit of knowledge, especially on the academic side, about how climate change is impacting different communities in New England and around the world. Specifically, my research and my teaching really focuses on using systems approaches to try to help communities at home and abroad adapt to climate change. So, yeah, I think those are some of the main things that I would bring to the committee. I'm also teaching a course this fall specifically aimed at helping our students better understand, our civil engineering students anyway, better understand what towns and municipalities in our region are doing to adapt to climate change. So I think I have a lot of academic knowledge that I could bring to the table in terms of what is happening, what we might expect, as well as engineering knowledge about, right, what the town might need to do to specifically, right, address sea level rise, storm surge, et cetera. I've also worked a lot with Eversource Energy to try to improve their storm resiliency in Connecticut, and have quite a bit of research experience, try to understand how climate change specifically is going to impact storm restoration in the state of Connecticut. So those are some of the areas which I think I have some expertise in, and would certainly like to participate and help the town.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Mellor? Okay. Thank you very much for coming in, and thank you for your willingness to serve. We'll be deciding in just a moment.
Very good. Thank you.
Please. I will make a motion to appoint Jonathan Mellor to the Resilience and Energy Committee of, when is that term ending?
November 30, 2024.
For a term ending November 30, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Great. Thank you, sir. It's a great group. I'm liaison to that, so looking forward to having you. The next item is Parks and Recreation. We have a student representative, Max Dunn, who could not be with us, so we will take that in the September meeting. After that, we have Zoning Board of Review. Is Michelle Turgeon here?
Hi.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to zoning?
Sure. My name's Michelle Turgeon, and I have a lot of experience in landscape architecture. Currently, I work as a designer. I do a lot of hardscaping, landscape, and renovation work in town. And I'd like to, hopefully, as my kind of civic responsibility, to help Barrington, the town that we've chosen. We're transplants from Florida, and I think it's just really important to, in zoning and in the planning phases, to make the town a better place. And I hope that I can tap into my experience in landscape architecture and working with multidisciplinary engineers, as well as planners. And I guess that's what I'm hoping to contribute.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Turgeon? Okay. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Clark Westcott, please. Mr. Westcott, thanks for coming in tonight. You tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to zoning.
Yes, I'm happy to. So lifelong Barrington resident, just moved back, so lifelong, moved away, came back, raising a family here now. Care a lot about just general responsible development of this town. Plan to be here forever. So background is building and remodeling, so I have a bit of experience on being on this side of, you know, the zoning meetings. Always had an interest in it, and just recently sort of got the bug to want to do something for the town that I live in, you know? So that's pretty much all I bring to the table, but I'm definitely eager to get on some committee and help out in some way.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Westcott? Okay. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thanks.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Michelle Turgeon to the third alternate of the Zoning Board of Review with an expiration date of November 30, 2025.
Okay. That's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you both for your willingness to serve, and congratulations. Okay. So now we get to the DEI Committee, and I believe Counsel Humm wanted to make a suggestion about procedure on, as we interview.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carroll. So given that we have four prospective members of the committee who are unable to make it tonight, I propose that what we do tonight is we hear everybody who's in attendance and ask them questions if we have any, and that we vote on, since there are four people not here, I propose we vote on five full members tonight, and that we reserve on the additional four members plus the two alternates to the next meeting, to give the four individuals who are unable to attend an opportunity to interview and present as well. The reason for that is this is our first meeting in person, and up until literally last Monday at our meeting, we were virtual. And for whatever reasons, these folks can't be here, whether they're traveling or any other reason, it just struck me as it wouldn't be fair to move on without them and at least give them an opportunity when, as recent as last week, they could have participated via Zoom or virtually. So that's what I propose. Open to further discussion from other council members.
Jacob?
I like that idea a lot. One suggestion I'd make would be possibly six people now, and the reason being, it would make it easier for them to meet in the meantime. If it's five people, all five would have to be available at once. If we do six, then they could meet once, and that could also give us a better sense of how we can make the subsequent appointments in September.
Just to clarify, we had a similar issue with the EDC, and I believe that the Solicitor's Office advised that if you have not appointed someone, if you have an unfilled seat that has never been filled, it doesn't count towards quorum. So we wouldn't necessarily have the problem. But I turned to the Solicitor on that.
Usually, the quorum question we get is whether someone who, is whether a vacancy counts, and a vacancy doesn't affect the number needed for quorum. I haven't encountered that question before with respect to a seat that's never been filled, but I think for purposes of committee functioning and getting, especially, you know, constituting the committee and meeting together for the first time, it's not a legal, it's not legal advice. I would suggest you wait for the entire committee to be constituted. I know the work is important and needs to be started sooner rather than later, but that way you don't have, some of the members, half the members feeling like they're late to the party.
Please go ahead.
I'm not opposed to that at all. That's a good suggestion from Ms. Owens. Interested in what the Committee of Liaisons think in terms of the work in starting that committee. You know, are the two of you, not to put you on the spot, but are the two of you okay waiting an additional meeting or so?
I think so. I like what Amy said about not wanting anyone to feel like they're late to the party or unable to contribute. And I also appreciate the challenges that not being on Zoom present to folks, having to reschedule or shift things around so that they could be here. So I, especially in the summer, so.
I think adding to that, perhaps also then waiting until September to make the appointments for Chair and Vice Chair as well, until we have the full committee appointed, and if they're not going to be meeting between now and September, then there's no need to appoint the Chair just yet.
Go ahead.
Just one point of clarification, then, would the terms end July 30, 2022, or would we push out until the full committee was appointed of September of 2022? Because otherwise, it's close to 10 months that people have as opposed to a year.
Yeah, that's a real concern.
Terms ending September 30.
That's true.
It might be in order for the council member who made that motion to make an amended motion, and we'll just adjust that date accordingly.
Can I make a motion to amend the earlier motion which was voted on and adopted to change the dates from July 31, 2024, July 31, 2023, July 31, 2022, to September 13, 2024, 2023, and 2022? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. President, typically, the expirations are at the end of the month, so just for continuity purposes, you may want to make it September 30.
Sure. Okay. So I'll make that September 30. Is that the second?
Second, second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Do I need Amy to, do we need to have a motion to split up the appointments, or can we just put it on the calendar for next time? In other words, we're going to vote on some number tonight, and then?
You can, you can, you don't need a motion for that.
Okay, great.
Mr. President, just for clarification, you're going to interview everyone that's present here tonight.
That's right.
You're going to appoint six. Anyone that wasn't appointed tonight will still be considered next month for the remaining positions? Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. So to be clear, be, go ahead.
And would that be regardless of an up or down vote on that candidate? Let's say a vote, a candidate gets voted down, they could still be appointed next month? Is that, or would we, just to clarify?
I think they could be appointed next month if anyone wanted to bring them up again.
Okay. And if I can clarify, so I made that suggestion thinking that it would give an opportunity for the committee to have a meeting before our next meeting, which isn't until September. I'm not opposed to hearing the interviews that we have tonight, but voting on everybody at once, given that there's no meeting in between, so I guess there's no rush to vote on anybody tonight. We can just hold all the votes until the next meeting.
What do we think about that?
I think just from the idea of when people are keeping someone in their memory, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask people to show up twice to a meeting, and yet I worry that if someone came tonight, that they then, if we're holding all the votes until the next time, we're just really not giving everybody a chance who came tonight to get appointments tonight. And the way memories work, I think people would be less likely to vote for someone who spoke tonight, even though they were not present at the next one. So I would prefer to appoint members who are here tonight, tonight, and then hold those remaining seats for others.
Okay. No, that's a good point. I'm on board with that. I'll just, I'll reiterate the initial request for five then, given that there's four people who aren't here, and given that there's no meeting. And you wanted the amendment to six because of the potential for a meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. I understood it was going to stay at five when they weren't going to have the meeting.
Okay. So in case some folks didn't follow that, what we're talking about is appointing, interviewing everyone who's here tonight who has applied for the DEI Committee. And then, we'll appoint five tonight, and we'll appoint the remaining group at our September meeting. So if you're interviewed and you're not appointed tonight, you may be appointed at that September meeting. You don't need to come to that. You're certainly welcome to, and we encourage folks to come, but you don't need to come to that meeting in September if you've already been interviewed. We won't re-interview you at that point. So we'll just do one set of interviews, and then we'll select five tonight, and the remaining on September 13 with the other folks who couldn't make it tonight. Okay.
And just for clarity, I believe I understand that we will not be entertaining additional applicants in the interim. The deadline has passed for application, or?
How do people feel about that? I'm indifferent on that.
I'm a bit indifferent too, but I'm leaning towards not having additional applicants because these are the folks who got it in and clearly are eager to move forward. So I wouldn't want them to potentially, a month or month and a half from now, be penalized because there are new additional applicants.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. All right. So we won't accept additional applicants for this position. So, any further questions before we start? First person up for interview, A. Larry Barron. Mr. Barron, thanks for coming in, and please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to the DEI Committee.
Thanks for having me. My name is Larry Barron. First, let me thank you for your courage in establishing this committee. It's so important, and I know there are other towns on East Bay where they've tried to have DEI Committees, and it hasn't, it hasn't succeeded. I was born and raised in South Providence. Went to Roger Williams Middle School, where the student population was roughly 50/50 black and white. And it was my first exposure to black people. The way it worked out of the middle school was that after two years, some folks went to classical, and then after three years, it was a three-year school. After three years, and most of the kids who went to classical were white, after three years, the balance of the student population went either to Hope, and that was mixed black and white, or Central, which was pretty much all black. This past weekend, my two daughters were home. The oldest Abby's 34, the youngest Beca is 30. We had a heart-to-heart discussion about what they didn't get. We moved, of course, to Barrington because I wanted my kids to play, as many people do. I wanted my kids to get a great education. They did. What they didn't get was diversity. And I was very much aware of that during this past year when I led a group in self-study based on the book Me and White Supremacy, where we became aware of our white privilege. And one of the things that I deeply regret is that I didn't offer them the opportunity for diversity. So we talked a lot about that. Good news is, is that they are aware of it on their own, and they're seeking it out in their own life spaces. So I think that what, I think there are two things that this committee should do. One, we need to figure out how we can provide a welcoming environment for people who are marginalized, whether it be because of their race, their heritage, physically, their physical ability, their mental ability, their sexual preference. Those people who might be othered, we need to make Barrington a welcome town. Those people who, who might be othered, we need to make Barrington a welcome town for those people. And the other thing, you know, in his autobiography, Malcolm X tells a story about how, after delivering a fiery speech early on in his career as a, as a black Muslim preacher, where, where the central message for him was that the white man is the devil. At the end of that speech, a college girl, a white college girl approached him and said, "I'm, I'm so inspired. How can I help? What can I do to be part of this?" And he looked at her in the eye and said, "Absolutely nothing." And years later, after he became disillusioned with Elijah Muhammad and went to Mecca and actually met some white Muslims in the Middle East who were, who were good people, he came back. And in the book, the one regret that he says in the book was that, you know, "I wonder where that girl is now. I'd like to, I'd like to sit down with her and tell her there is something you can do. You can work in your own community, in your white community, to get the people in that community to understand what has happened to, to black folks, and to understand their privilege, and to use their privilege for good." And so I think that's the other thing that this committee has to do, is we need to somehow in a gentle way have conversations with our neighbors, with our families, about the privilege that we have, what it means to have it. And again, in a gentle way, we're not here to cast blame, we're not here to demonize anybody, but to, for there to be a realization that this privilege does exist, and with the privilege, there's so much that we can do, and to make use of that privilege. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay. Thank you for your willingness to serve. The next person is Kathleen Bruckner. Can you tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to DEI?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Bruckner, but I do go by the nickname Trinkie. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to explain why I would like to serve Barrington as a member of the DEI Committee, and why I think that I could contribute to it. My husband and I have lived at 4 Ellis Street for almost 31 years. We raised our four children here, and our older son lives in town with his wife and two preschoolers. One of the reasons I'd like to serve on the Committee is that I'd like Barrington to be a richly diverse, more equitable, and more welcoming place for my grandchildren to grow up in. I think that I have both work and volunteer experience that would inform my participation on the Committee. I worked for Barrington Books for many years, several of them as event manager. This work gave me the opportunity to get to know and serve many people in town, and to bring diverse groups together for literary-centered community events. After leaving the bookstore, I taught English to adult immigrants at Progresso Latino in Central Falls, and I retired from there about six years ago. In retirement, I have volunteered at Higher Ground International, an organization serving African refugees and immigrants, and I designed, implemented, and then taught in their literacy program. I have been trained by the Rhode Island State Council of Churches as a facilitator for their program, Merciful Conversations on Race, Let's Talk About White Privilege. I have completed the Level 1 Racial Justice Training of the United Church of Christ, the Two-and-a-Half Day Program, Measuring Racial Equity, a Groundwater Approach of the Racial Equity Institute, and the Five-Day Intensive Training in Kingian Nonviolence and Conflict Reconciliation offered by the URI Center for Nonviolence and Peace Studies. Also, along with Helen Shaw, I co-founded Barrington Interfaith Partners in 2016. Our mission is to educate ourselves and the community in order to bring about a more just society, and we have hosted 10 community forums on topics including slavery in Rhode Island and Barrington, racial violence, and immigration reform. In 2017, after President Trump initiated his Muslim ban, I organized an Islam Information Program at my church with Eman Farid Ansari and Dr. Umar Akbar. I care deeply about fairness and justice, and would like to work with the DEI Committee to make Barrington a more just, diverse, and welcoming community for everyone now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Castell. Not seeing Ms. Castell. Candace Sharpentier is not available. Bill Delaney. Mr. Delaney, can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Committee?
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor to be here tonight. I don't have all of the interactions that the two prior speakers had. My name's William Delaney. I'm 67 years old, a white man, a retiree of the United States Army Reserve, served in post-Vietnam era, educated on the GI Bill of Rights, stationed down south as a Catholic and a Yankee back in the early '70s, there were still problems. We live at 38 Upland Way in Barrington. I live in the house my wife was born in. Our town clerk's husband's family is, is her first cousin. We, we've been living, well, I've been living there for 29 years. I've been active to a degree in the community. I served as a member of the Appropriations Committee for, well, for approximately 10 years, served as its Chair for five. So I can understand what you five are going through, at least, in my case, only for four months a year, or five months a year. We live in a time that I thought that we would not be living in, back when I was 18, and the next year I got my number, and the next year I enlisted in the Army. We still do not have equality with regards to race, diversity. We have so many issues that need to be at least aired, and when they do get aired, quite often, there is a lot of pushback against the people who are trying to air those issues. That shouldn't be. Unfortunately, it is. We need to have a dialogue. We need to have a dialogue now. We needed to have one for about 50 years. But that being said, why not start now? We're in a position, I believe, to be able, in this environment, in this town, to at least get a dialogue going. We aren't going to change anything relative to the sales prices of homes and the like. I'm a commercial attorney. I've been practicing here in Rhode Island for 34 years. I've been a lawyer for 38 years. We aren't going to all of a sudden establish housing that's going to be acceptable in an amount that people may, or may not ordinarily want to come to Barrington for. But at this juncture in our times, we need to have some sort of a dialogue regarding equality. I've undertaken that initiative with the Bar Association. I'm the former president of the Bar. We have a diversity committee, in which I've been a member since inception, approximately nine months ago. We are doing some good things with the Bar Association. We also have a diversity group within the Rhode Island Supreme Court, which has been long-needed. We are being attentive as members of the Bar to the questions of diversity, the questions of equality. I've also been an adjunct faculty member of three law schools for the last 19 years. I had spent, retired two years ago from Roger Williams, where I had observed, even in the years from 2002 to 2017, a shockingly low number of law students of diverse backgrounds. We need to attract them more for the Bar. We need to be able to put them in positions and mentor them to be able to go out and represent the ideals of lawyers, but more importantly, their own ideals, and to be able to present them in a cogent, satisfactory manner. I welcome the opportunity, at this stage in my life, to work with younger people. I've always enjoyed that. I note at least the first three of us who have spoken are at least over 50 years old. So I, I welcome the opportunity, if you feel appropriate, that I become a member or an alternate, and I will do my best. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. Next person is Mr. Stephen Felix. Mr. Felix. Thanks for coming in. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring. I, I note that you went to Loyola High School and then struggled with your college and graduate degree. You weren't, I see, able to get into a Jesuit school, but those Yale and Harvard are perfectly good safety schools, so. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to the Committee.
Yeah, actually, I didn't even think of that. But I'm Stephen Felix. I'm relatively new to Barrington. I've lived here for about two years, and before that, I was living in Boston. And we, me and my wife and my two kids, moved down here about two years ago, largely because of her family, which, who live just up the road in Riverside, and because Barrington has amazing schools. And just to kind of start out, I'd like to echo what the first person who came up here and spoke said, was that one of the things that we really had to debate in coming here was the relatively low or very low levels of diversity here. And that was a really tough point for us to kind of overcome. In the end, of course, we're here. I, I wanted my kids to have, you know, a great education. But I think that, that the diversity issue has always been forefront of my mind even before I came here. But anyway, I'm originally from Los Angeles, from a pretty diverse area of town. I've always been, I've tended to end up in very diverse areas, and I've been privileged to, to benefit from all of those experiences, and experiences of those people in my life. And speaking of what you mentioned, going to a Jesuit high school, and I, I actually do think that's relevant, now that you bring it up. I went to a Jesuit high school, and after college, I spent a year doing volunteer work with the Jesuits. And one of their expressions is, well, the Loyola expression is "men for others." The, the Jesuit Volunteer Corps expression is "ruined for life." And the idea is, is once you've opened your eyes finally to something, or at least, in my case, begun to open my eyes, I realize, you know, as we all do, we have a long way to go in terms of educating ourselves and being aware of the injustices that are, that are present throughout our own lives, is that once you start to see those things, you can't go back. And so I, I'm excited to potentially, or to contribute if, if it, if you feel that I can offer something to this Committee, because I do believe that Barrington is a great town already, but it has a long way to go in terms of diversity, in terms of equity. I think one of the big motivating factors recently has been the year-long flag debate, and I, I'm kind of just flabbergasted that something could, that we could spend so long debating, something that just seems so, so, something that should be so mundane, the idea that Black Lives Matter, that, that, you know, of course, it's clear that we need to say it, and that's why this movement exists, and to raise a flag about it and have it be this huge drawn-out thing, is, I guess, maybe it's not surprising, it is disheartening. But where there's smoke, there's fire. And if, if we're having trouble raising a flag, there are clearly lots of issues, deeper issues, that this town has to deal with and has to face. And I can't, you know, identify all of those right now. I'm relatively new to this town, but there are a lot of the same things that most towns in America, I'm sure, face, but especially ones populated mostly by white, privileged, wealthy people, such as myself. In terms of my background, I, I have recently come off, since moving here, we, I spent four years living in the dorms with the undergraduates at Harvard, who are brilliant and diverse, and challenged me in so many ways. And in my role, living as a resident tutor in one of the dorms there, we have to provide, provide counseling, provide help, provide assistance, but we also have to help with the running of the House, including some of the policies and the ways that we run events, the events we run. And in, in a lot of those cases, we run out, we, we came up against a lot of really important issues about accessibility and inclusivity, and things that, at the time, I wasn't aware of. I hadn't opened my eyes yet to. Things about, you know, how, how does funding student events affect accessibility for different types of students from different backgrounds? How does holding an auction fundraiser, what is that, I mean, how does that limit the accessibility for students who can't participate in, in such an event? How do we distribute limited resources to, for tickets to an event, or, you know, scholarship money, which, you know, all of these things, we actually had to decide for our students. How do we manage issues around Halloween costumes, which people find offensive with a very, you know, diverse student body? And so we had to address these issues head-on in discussions with our students, and to find ways to, to, to educate our students, and to also support those ones, those of our students who felt marginalized by any one of these several reasons, good reasons that they, they had to feel marginalized or displaced. Another role I played in this dormitory was officially as what they call a care tutor, which, the, whose role is to educate students about relationship, health, gender issues, sexual harassment. And so in, in that work, I not only dealt directly with students who may have experienced sexual harassment or sexual assault, but also worked on building a culture of, of awareness around these issues, and also a culture that does not accept these forms of injustice. And it's surprising how hard that can be. You, you can say these things that sound really, really obvious, like sexual assault is bad, and Black Lives Matter, and the amount of resistance you get is, is sometimes very surprising. So I would say I, my experience, a lot of this comes from, from these four years interacting with students who are much more vocal, much more willing to call me out. And I, I bring a willingness to learn, a willingness to call out my own privilege, and to see the ways that I contribute to injustice in Barrington and beyond, and a commitment to, to try to change that and to act against that.
Thank you. Question from Counselor Castell.
Just curious, on your, on your form, public program evaluation, I see you, you were data scientist as well. What is, what was the public program evaluation at USC School of Social Work, which I thought could be relevant?
Yeah, in, back in the mid 2000, in the aughts, is what they call them, Los Angeles, passed, City Council passed an initiative, or it may have been California, called First Five. And that, that initiative taxed cigarette sales, and used those funds to, to fund various public programs, one of which was a child maltreatment prevention and, prevention and prevention of recurrence, and also the first round of it. And so I was on a team tasked with taking that data and evaluating the effectiveness of, of that program.
Sure. Please, go ahead.
So I noticed that you have a PhD in psychology and a BA in psychology and are a data scientist. And so I wondered, and this is, it may seem as though it's obscure and not related to this, this position, however, the study of neurology in terms of separation, trauma, and pain, in terms of being excluded, I'm wondering if you have a lot of experience or knowledge about the neurological pathways... or knowledge about the neurological pathways, and I swear that comes from a place that a scientist I know very well is very interested in those things, so that's part of my question.
I mean, as a scientist, and a lot of scientists, they're very hesitant to make statements about things they're not experts in, so I won't make a statement about that, but I would say, I mean, I'm familiar with the, what a lot of people like to call the mind-brain connection and the impacts of your experiences on wiring of your brain and how that impacts your behavior, all of your behavior and the way you perceive and see things throughout your life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Next, Wafa Fraj. Thank you for coming in tonight, and please tell us a little about your background and what you can bring to DEI.
Sure, thank you so much. My name is Wafa Fraj. I have been living in Barrington since 2004. I have three adult children now, ages nineteen to twenty-four, two graduated from college and one still in Vanderbilt. I am a, I raised my kids by myself, I'm a single parent, and I came to the US in 2004, actually, in 1999, sorry, to Florida, then I moved here in 2004. I, my bachelor actually was in political science and economics, but when I worked here and I saw that a lot of systems and a lot of places, they need some changes to make it more inclusive and more equitable, I decided to go back to school and get my degree and master's in social work. So, right now, I work in a school in Providence, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I work with the most marginalized students in Rhode Island. According to Kids Count, the fact sheet, the trauma that they have, this population from Central Falls and Putakit and Providence, is way above anything you can imagine. It's like almost seventy-nine percent of our students, they have chronic and complex trauma. So, I work with diverse population, even my previous jobs, and I'm very passionate about equity and justice and human rights, and I'm hoping this is what I can bring to the table and to the committee, if I am chosen.
Thank you. Any questions?
You mentioned a global perspective, the broader perspective beyond the US as to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Can you reflect on that and what you could bring to the table in terms of your international background?
Sure. Yeah, so, I come from a Palestinian family. My parents lived in a small village and next to Jerusalem. I am a Muslim Palestinian woman, have US citizenship. My parents were displaced in 1948, they were thrown out of their house, and they had to move to a different country, and we lived there, we were born there. We lived for over twenty-five years in a country where discrimination was the law. It's called Kuwait, I'm sure most of you, maybe you heard it, heard the name, so, and after displacement, we had to witness the Gulf War in 1999, I believe, or 1990, and I keep telling my own kids and even my students I work with, the COVID lockdown was nothing for me, and I say it really, like, was really nothing for me compared to the lockdown we had in Kuwait for six months, and seeing the jets shooting at everyone around us, and this is nothing. Okay, you can sit home in your AC and if you go to the store, put mask on, and you can still work, and you can get unemployment. Other countries, there's no unemployment. I appreciate everything that the town gave me and gave my kids, but I still hoping that things can be more inclusive, things can be more equitable. My kids don't have to come home and cry because their hair is dark. My neighbor, who is African-American, doesn't have to be stopped every day or every month once, being asked by an officer, "Why are you walking at night?" "What, he's walking at night because he's going to work, he doesn't have a car." I just want Barrington and everywhere else to be more inclusive. I'm sorry if I'm emotional, but social justice and inclusion is very...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, there she is. Ms. Kaplan, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to the DEI committee.
Okay, first of all, I just want to put in a good note for Larry Baron, okay? Because I guess twenty-two years ago, he was the baseball coach for my daughter's little league team when she was eight years old, and his policy was to play all of the kids, it didn't matter how skilled they were, and I didn't appreciate this until the following year, when she was on a team where the two women running it played their own daughters, and it was a totally different atmosphere who got to play and who didn't, so, thank you. All right. My own background, if I just tell you the name of my high school, you'll know where I'm from. I went to Alamo Heights High School, okay? So, those of you who do not know Texas history, might not know about the Alamo being in San Antonio, but I am a longtime resident, about forty-four years of Barrington, same house, so, we've seen a lot of changes, and as, so, I possess a certain history. When we first moved here, Barrington was extremely conservative, okay? So, there has been a real turnaround in terms of the politics here, but even in terms of, we're Jewish, and we knew of somebody who in the late 50s was, I think, the second Jewish person who was able to buy a home in Barrington, a permanent home as opposed to a summer house. So, things have really changed a lot through the years, so as, even though there is much to be done, the progress is incredible from what we've seen through the years, which is a good thing. I am trustee of the library, and one of the reasons I wanted to be on the library board was because I'm a big believer in libraries. I think that libraries are one of the best institutions in the United States. The fact that anybody can go into a library and check out a book for free, check out a lot of books for free, attend programs for free, it is really open to so many people, and I think that that is, you know, a lot of people take advantage of it, which is good, even the computers, people can use them for free in the library. So, I have always been somebody who felt that education certainly should be available to everybody, and the library does provide that for many people. The, I guess, education is a huge piece of what I have done in the past, and currently, I have a tutoring service since 2005, and I tutor a wide variety of students, both culturally diverse, I have learned about, I always knew there was Hebrew school, and from my Big Fat Greek Wedding, I learned there was Greek school, and now, I also know there is the Star Chinese School, there is an Indian School, there is an Armenian School, and Japanese School up in Boston, where people send their kids, who they want them to still have a certain cultural identity while they still want them to fit in, and I think that that is what America is really about. It's not so much a melting pot of everybody being the same, but the idea that we should be able to celebrate our cultural differences, but still get along and not be discriminated against, and I think that that is where it breaks down for some people, that it's the other becomes, the different person becomes somebody that you have to be better than, and that's where, you know, I find that we really need to fight against that. I've been a longtime supporter, my husband and I, of organizations such as the ACLU, the Rhode Island one, the Southern Poverty Law Center, Fresh Air Fund that sends kids in New York City, underprivileged kids to camp for the summer, you know, all of those kinds of programs, I think, are wonderful. I think that Barrington High School, in its unified volleyball, unified theater, unified basketball, where they have kids with learning disabilities, excuse me, playing or doing theater alongside the kids who don't have the disabilities, it's one of those things that I wonder why it didn't happen years ago. I mean, it is such a wonderful program for everybody involved, and I think that the more of that kind of thing that we can promote, the better. In terms of my tutoring, besides the cultural diversity, I have learning diversity. I have tutored students who are in the autism spectrum or have the Asperger's Syndrome, have ADHD, you know, so the various problems, and I've also tutored kids who are brilliant, and I think that we have to really give everybody their due, in the sense that, I know the whole de-leveling education was a big deal this year, we had lots of kids putting flags on the town hall, and I think that sometimes certain policies are made without giving necessarily the long-term thinking about them. So, that's, I feel that I can bring to the committee just an open-mindedness and ability to see both sides of an issue and really work through coming up with a good solution that is going to be long-term right for everybody. Let's see, you know, I think the whole idea of what needs to be taught in schools, the fact that I knew nothing about the Tulsa massacre until this year, on its hundredth anniversary, I mean, that just shouldn't be. I've also learned that Thomas Jefferson, whom I always respected, owned six hundred slaves. He wasn't just a small slaveholder, and he did not free them upon his death like George Washington did, so he has unfortunately come down a bit in my estimation, but I think what we also see, whether it's Columbus or Jefferson or a wide variety, that it's very complex, and what we teach, we want to encourage patriotism, but we have to also let students understand things like colonialism. I never really, you know, we knew that these countries in Europe had colonies, but what happened in the colonies? Nobody ever talked about that, okay? So, I think that there is a really big area for education to catch up to what has been happening truly in the United States, and while we're better than most countries, there is a long way to go. Let's see, whether I, I think I've pretty much touched on everything. I do, I've always been fair-minded, and even when I was a little girl, in San Antonio, yeah, I saw sometimes they had pay toilets. I don't know if any of you, if you're too young to know about pay toilets, but what they would do is that they would have, like, say, in a bus station, maybe they would have four toilet stalls, and three of them were open to anybody, and they were disgusting. Nobody cleaned them, and the fourth one, you had to put money in, and that was the one that got cleaned. So, obviously, it was the privileged were, again, taken care of, even for something as minor as that. The, I can think of other examples as well that I've always felt, things like Valentine's Day at school, when everybody had shoeboxes that got filled with Valentines, and then they all got emptied out on the desk on the day of Valentine's Day, and I always wondered about the kids who didn't get many Valentines. You know, I was raised that you gave everybody the same thing. I couldn't understand why kids would only give some kids and not others. So, this, my whole life, I have been somebody who was, you know, on the side of fair play and fairness. So, I think that I've pretty much covered my background, so obviously, if you have any questions, I'm open.
Any questions for Ms. Kaplan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lyanna Morris, and I'm not sure if I'm saying your name correctly, because I know there is a Lyanna who says it that way, but...
True, there is.
Is it Lyanna?
Hi, my name is Lyanna.
Lyanna.
I'm competing with another person with the exact same spelling of my name, and I have never met anyone with the exact same spelling of my name until I moved here. That said, before I begin, I just wanted to say thank you to the speakers in the room. I feel so in awe of the members of this community. I was excited to come here, and I am excited to see if I can offer something to the group, but I also have to say that with the small number of minority voices that there are in Barrington, we have some powerful speakers in the room, and I'm excited to be in their presence. I am a native New Yorker, and I've been here in Barrington for six years. I am a black, multiracial woman who is an ally of the LGBTQ+ community. I'm raising multiracial kids here in Barrington with my multiracial partner. So, we come from a very mixed background, all of us, and that said, we have always been able to identify as many things and to pass as many things, but ultimately, always other. So, when you come somewhere like Barrington where everyone, most people are extremely homogeneous, it's not a surprise to me. I grew up in a town like Barrington where I was an other, and I'm used to being an other, and I'm thrilled to speak as an other, to see if I can provide a little bit of diversity to whatever the group hopefully can do for the town. That said, I'm also an educator, and I am a progressive educator who also practices restorative practices, and for me, what that means is my, I started out as a social studies teacher at an international school in the Bronx, where we were, it's a school, it still is, a school community of new immigrants, so all the children in the school have to have been in the country for four years or fewer, and they're all learning English. So, the, and they're all learning English from very different backgrounds. So, the concept of diversity in a school like that is really essential. It is what brings everyone together, is everyone is coming from a different background, and it breeds exceptional educators, because you can't chalk and talk. There is no chalk and talk when no one is understanding what you're saying. So, I had a great experience working in the Bronx for a number of years, learning what it's like to be an exceptional educator. And that said, what I wanted to get to is, I started out as a social studies teacher, however, I found that my interest in education was always in what we call the hidden curriculum, which is what kids experience in a school that's not what the teacher is teaching. So, what the most vulnerable kid in the classroom is experiencing when they're being ignored, or they're being stepped on, or they go to their locker and they always have the bottom locker, so they always get crushed by the person up there. That hidden curriculum is something that educators have to take very seriously and have to be very deliberate about, because otherwise, you end up with a school where kids can get bullied and nobody even notices. It is the culture where the majority of the population will take over the curriculum even, the teacher will not even notice that they're not teaching to everyone in the room because they're going to teach right to that middle. So, as a progressive educator, I have always found that my calling was more to make sure that the school culture and the school climate is one that does include everybody and is one that does not only accept everybody for their differences, but also really celebrates those differences and makes... those differences, and makes that an essential part of the school. So my interest in the town really is that I think we're there. I think we're at a point where everybody's eyes are open enough now, after some very difficult racial tensions throughout the country that have come to light. For those of us who didn't notice before, I think everybody has noticed. And we need to do some healing as a country. And I think that a small town like Barrington, where we have some really committed people who are willing to put in the work to look at what we're doing underneath everything, I think I can offer some listening and some ideas to what that committee can offer. That said, I have seen amazing things in my kids' school. My kids go to Primrose, they're extremely happy there. But because of distance learning, as I put in my application, I did have the opportunity to see, like, inside of a classroom, which, as a parent, you always wonder, what are they doing all day? Like, I would love, I wish to be a fly on the wall. And when you get to be in the room, when they're on Zoom with their teacher, you do see a little bit of that. And I can tell that the, to whatever extent the school committee has made an effort to have diversity, equity, and inclusion within the curriculum, I can see it. My kids are in first and second grade, and they come home with pictures of kids of color, just not because they're kids of color, just because that's what happened to be the picture. And they learn about people of color, and they learn about people who are not fully abled, and they, they are, it is part of the culture of the school. And I remember walking into the library class of my daughter, who's in first grade, and they were learning about what it means to be Latino, because kids in Barrington may not have ever seen more than one Latino in their lives, and that person might be a kid in their class. And those kids, like my daughter, may not even know what it means to be Latina, especially in a town where she's looking around and nobody looks like her, but she could also pass for those who are around her, so it doesn't really come to light so easily. In any event, I have spent a good amount of time with myself personally, professionally, and also with my partner on like a day-to-day level, discussing privilege and race, and what it's like to live in Barrington. So my partner did grow up in Barrington, and he was one of two people of color in his class, always. There was always two. And it was him, and then his best friend, who was a close friend of mine in college, not accidentally, because she introduced us, but she's a member of the town as well. And they can relate to me that there were so, there was, the opportunity for diversity was so minimal when they were growing up, just a couple decades ago, that we've come a long way as a town. And I do see this point in time as a turning point, that Barrington needs to put itself in the front. It's possible, there's enough people who are on board, there's enough people of a minority opinion who are willing to speak up and at least let the voice be heard, that I'm really excited that we are going to have this DEI committee. And I have a bunch of other points, but I feel like I could talk all night, and I don't think that's fair to do. Let me just see if there's anything that I have to say. I did want to say that, just bringing it back to the concept of the hidden curriculum, I signed up my children for the raising of the pride flag during June. Every school could, you could go to the raising, if you could get there at 7:15 in the morning. And so we were planning to do that, and we have, we talked a little bit about the pride flag. And my kids, who, like I said, are in first and second grade, they said, oh, you mean the flag that they raise at the middle school and the high school? Like, they knew already. It was, the kids are picking up on what we are doing as a town to include people, and they're doing it without even noticing. And so when we don't do it, and when we don't pay attention, they're picking up on that also. And so there's a lot of harm that can be done if we're not very deliberate about who we're including and how and when. That's all, that's all for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Sure, go ahead, Carl. No questions, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maselli, thank you for coming in, and if you could tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to DEI.
We'd just like to say thank you for having us, and thank you for establishing this committee. I'd also like to thank all those who have spoken before me. I'm a lifelong Rhode Island resident, but not in Barrington, only in almost 10 years now here in Barrington. And it's a beautiful community, but one of the reasons, like others have said, I almost didn't move here for the fact that I didn't feel that it was as diverse as I would have, as I would like. But I have raised my daughter here since she started in the fourth grade here, and I thought the education was phenomenal, and she's now off to college. And as a social worker, so I'm just nearly 25 years a social worker. A lot of my background has been within hospitals, emergency rooms, inpatient units, and I've seen, you know, Rhode Islanders of all kinds here, and differences. The diversity piece, though, has really, throughout my years as a social worker, I've continued to take CEU classes and ongoing classes for diversity and equity. And I think within this past year, I felt that I really, as a social worker, wasn't getting involved enough. I think we've all seen the difficulties, and I felt like I really need to do my part in this. And if in any way the committee, you know, could use me, or, you know, my availability and what I have to offer, I would gladly assist.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Braxton Howard Medlin. Thank you for coming in. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to the DEI committee.
Thank you for having me. My name is Braxton Howard Medlin. I am an attorney in Rhode Island. I'm an alum of Roger Williams University School of Law. And I have been a resident of Barrington for 364 days as of today. So in those 364 days, it's been very interesting. I moved during COVID, and so a lot of the people that I met were wearing masks, so it's nice to see all of your smiles now. That's great. What I bring to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee would be my cultural competency. I've spent my entire life learning about people and learning about other cultures, and not just learning, but also understanding and listening. Even when I was in high school, I studied abroad in Spain. In undergrad, I went to Mexico for six months and lived with a host family and became, you know, part of the culture. I didn't just learn Spanish, I became part of Mexican culture. As a public defender, I served my community in Colorado, and also here as well, working with different types of people, and not just about skin color, but about economics, about religions, and trying to figure out, okay, well, how can I communicate with this client based on what their religious beliefs are? Or based on how their culture is set up, so I need to talk to this person's father instead of, you know, talking to them, but also have to recognize that I have a client, so the client is the master of their case. Right, understood. So I think that's what is a really important part of diversity, equity, and inclusion, is the competency, and that's what I bring to the committee, and that's what I would like to contribute.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Medlin? Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
David Meele. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming in. Please tell us what you hope to bring to DEI.
Thank you. I'm new in Barrington, I'm 365 days plus a few more than that. We came in November of 2019, my wife and I, in retirement. We have family up and down the New England coast. I'm a retired United Church of Christ Congregational Minister, as well as having served eight years as the Executive Director of a regional interfaith organization in St. Louis, Missouri. I'm currently working as part of the interfaith, Barrington Interfaith Partners Organization, have become very active in that awesome organization. My wife and I have a community garden plot in the garden in Barrington, and I'm also involved in the Barrington Equity Collaborative Group, which is fairly new in the area, working alongside of what you're doing here with the DEI committee. I think I have 40-plus years of organizational experience around change within organizations. I have worked to facilitate safe places for diverse discussions across all kinds of bridges and barriers. I am typically in a, on a committee table, one of the people who tries to make sure that everybody is heard, even if it means we have to go off the rails in terms of the agenda from time to time. I think I'm pretty good at reading the room and understanding kind of what's going on within the event itself. I've also had a history now in my latter years, in terms of my career, of watching carefully for new leadership people to emerge, younger leadership people to emerge, people of color, people of different backgrounds in organizations, and trying to foster and empower and enable that leadership. I'm a good fund finder. I seek cooperative partnerships across various lines and organizations, and I've written and rewritten and rewritten mission statements over many years, and I understand how important staying on the mission, staying on point is in all organizations. This work is a passion for me, it continues to be so, and I don't bring anything to Barrington except an open ear to learn what the community needs, and then, where it's possible, apply some of my own experiences, along with other leadership people within the community, to make Barrington a more equitable and inclusive place. In my interfaith work, in the latter part of my career, we built children's programming in the region, we worked with police and with public employees on diversity training, particularly around religious differences within communities, and I have a good deal of experience in experimental efforts to just try to find places for people to move more clearly from me to we. So thank you so much for having this event tonight, and for giving me an opportunity to share with the other people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Simon is not available tonight. Rebecca Taub, Ms. Taub, thank you. Thanks for coming in and staying, and please tell us what, a little about yourself and what you can bring to DEI.
Sure. Well, thank you, thank you for having me. I, and thank you to everyone else who has spoken tonight. I really feel more part of this community, of this town, than I ever have before. This is my first town council meeting as well. So I, I just, I'm also humbled by the people in the room and the experiences and the conversations that, that are starting to happen just tonight. My name is Rebecca Taub, and my pronouns are she/her. I am a white, heterosexual Jewish woman, mother, a wife, a friend, and an educator. I moved to Rhode Island with my husband in 2006. We lived in Providence until we came to Barrington just this past November, so I don't have the days down, but it's about eight months that we've been, that we've been in Barrington with our two young daughters, who are now, who will be entering the Barrington schools this fall. So there are three reasons why I applied to be, to serve on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for this town, for the town of Barrington. Number one, I see there is potential to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion learning opportunities and spaces for our town, and to make them more accessible to all, to all those who wish to participate. Number two, I also want to participate to make the town of Barrington a more inclusive place. So all community members feel that they have an accessible space to share their story, to share their voice, to be heard when it comes to matters related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And number three, I am a lifelong learner. This is kind of my mantra, or my mission statement, my personal mission statement. I listen to learn, I reflect to act and grow, and I persist to iterate and innovate. I have been undergoing or partaking in personal and professional development and trainings in diversity and equity and inclusion and accessibility, and in anti-racist trainings for many years now. And I really want to contribute those skills and that knowledge to foster a more diverse and inclusive community here in Barrington. Finally, I, you, I know this is short, and I want to keep it succinct, because we're all a little sweaty, like me, and tired, but I hope you can tell that I am a driven person. I am very passionate about this work. In my day job, I work to make digital environments more accessible and equitable, and I develop educators so they can better serve their diverse audiences and learners. And I would bring all of those skills to this committee, and I would learn from the people around me and all of their skills as well. So thank you again, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Jack Van Leer is not available, so Glenn Moore Wagner. Mr. Wagner, thank you for coming in. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to DEI committee.
First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody that's here. The competition is very good, and also to the board, okay? My name is Glenn Moore Wagner. I'm originally from Belize, Central America, but I grew up in Los Angeles, California, as that other gentleman from Los Angeles, California. Grew up in a very diverse town, as far as different races, everybody have different backgrounds, things that they enjoy doing, that you learn to adapt and also adopt. When I was growing up, to me, the definition of diversity is challenges. You have to be willing to deal with challenges, and that's what this is about, being diverse. And a couple of other, other people that spoke said that it's unfortunate that it took to get to this point, that you had to have a diversity committee. That being said, when I was growing up, I always had a dream of wanting to be a firefighter. So what I did, I worked hard to become a firefighter. Unfortunately, I never went through the academy. I was a volunteer firefighter, and I scored pretty high on both the physical and the oral interview exam, several occasions, but they weren't diverse in allowing people that were not, you know, black on the fire department. But that being said, that didn't stop me, so I still continue to try to get on. Never happened, but I ended up joining the Marine Corps. When I was in the Marine Corps, I was standing in formation in boot camp, and I remember my drill instructor said, Wagner. And I'm looking around like, wow, Wagner, they're calling my name. So they called my name, and what they made me was the guide. I was in charge of 62 recruits in boot camp. And everybody came from different backgrounds, different cultures, but at the end of the day, we were all diverse and we worked as a team. And that's what diversity is all about. You have to be willing to work as a team, because just because we may not agree upon something, we still find a common ground, which is a solution to make things happen. And as far as being in the Marine Corps, I ended up being involved in combat in the Gulf War, kind of like what that other lady was referring to. I was in that environment. And even in that environment, unfortunately, I had experienced, you know, submarines that were in there that didn't want blacks fighting side by side. But that didn't stop me, because you know what? I still want to come back home alive, okay? And that was the end of the game, to come back home alive. And even though some of those people might have felt like that, because they had an inferiority complex, they were just thinking diversity. So they got pushed to the wayside. I got out of the Marine Corps, and right now, I own and operate my plumbing business that I've been doing for all over 20 years. And my fiancee right there, Tanya Maselli, that was here, we've been together for a while. We come from different backgrounds. So my mind, I've always been a diverse thinker. I have employees that work for me, I don't care if they're black. I don't care if they're black, white, if they're women, it doesn't matter. Everybody brings something to the table. And I think if you don't open up your mind to allow these people to bring something to the table, you're just failing yourself. And, you know, as far as, when Tanya had mentioned this, I said, you know what? Put my name in, and like I said, the competition is real good, and even the ones that are not here. But I appreciate the time and effort, you know, that everybody put together to make this happen, and whoever gets put on the board, you know, I'm quite sure that they're ones that is qualified as well, and I want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. I wanted to, to say that this is our first meeting back live, and I can tell you, for me and probably my colleagues, it's really heartening. One of the things that's, that's really great about our community is how many extraordinary people there are who are really willing to give up their time and their talent to make it a better community and to serve our community. So, I'm, I'm really grateful for that. I don't think we have anybody left to interview, so I would like to make the first motion to appoint Braxton Howard Medlin to the DEI Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have no further discussion. We had a hand over here to the right. Ms. Taub, I think.
I forgot to say that I would be willing to serve as vice chair for chair if that was, I forgot to say that.
Okay.
I just wanted to make that.
Thank you.
Make that evident. Thank you.
Okay.
I just, clarification, what, what term length are we, should that be part of the motion?
So, we've talked about making the, the chair and vice chair at our next meeting, right? I think that's what we, yeah. So, why don't we decide on the, the terms for each person at the next meeting in that way? Because, you know, if someone's, we select someone as chair, we want it to have them as the three-year term.
So, now, so we'll just do five tonight without setting them into a specific length?
Time slot, yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Braxton, thank you. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Leanna Maris to the DEI Committee for a term to be decided at our next meeting.
I would second that motion for Leanna Maris.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kathleen Bruckner Trinkie to the committee.
Okay. I'd second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Anyone like to make a motion? That's one, two, three.
I'll make a motion to appoint Stephen Felix.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would like to make a motion to appoint Glenn Moore Wagner.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The only discussion I'd like to raise is how impressed I was with all of the presentations tonight. I was blown away. I mean, this, this is, this is pretty amazing. I'm glad that we're all here in person, but thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight.
And thanks for coming in in this weather. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So, we have selected our five. That does not mean that those who haven't been selected won't be chosen at our next meeting. We're just going to give the four people who couldn't be here an opportunity to come in and be interviewed, and then we'll select the remaining six folks at that time. So, thank you all very much for your willingness to serve. The next item on our, oh, Carl, please.
Can I just, just make one point of personal privilege, one, one comment? There was one of the candidates who said, "Well, you know, if you feel that I can be, I can offer something to this committee." I would echo Vice President Humms' comments. Everyone can offer something to this committee. Everyone, whether selected or not, is, is more than welcome to attend the, these open meetings, and in fact, you will strengthen this community by doing so. You will strengthen this committee, you will strengthen this community while doing, by doing so. I think that we have an embarrassment of riches in terms of the, the quality of the candidates, and that will continue through our next meeting. And I, I believe it is a sense of the council that, that we, we feel extremely fortunate with the people who have applied, and, and I would encourage every single one of you to please continue involvement regardless of whether you are chair of this committee or whether there will be an opportunity down the road for you, because this, I think this was an excellent, this is an excellent group of people, truly.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This is a three-minute statement, a Senate for Agenda item for members who, of the public who'd like to speak regarding a topic not already on the agenda. If you'd like to, please raise your hand. When you're recognized, please state your name and residency, and if you could write your name and residency on that little piece of paper, that makes it easier for Mary. Please, come forward.
Thank you. Thank you so much. My name is Susannah Holloway. I also go by Suzie. I've already written my name and my address there. So, thank you so much for giving me some time tonight. What I have to explain, I explain it more in sorrow than in anger, but I really need to do it. So, dear honorable members of the Town Council, the Town of Barrington, Honorable Secretary of State, Nellie Gorbaya, Honorable Town Manager of the Town of Barrington, Honorable Town Clerk of the Town of Barrington, and Staff of the Rhode Island Secretary of State, Mr. Martizian and Ms. Zania. Please know that I, Susannah Holloway, was voted off the Board of Directors of Film Forward, a Rhode Island nonprofit corporation, ID number 001726105, on July 9th, 2021. The official minutes of said July 9th, 2021, Board Meeting of the Film Forward Board of Directors are attached here too and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. At the same time, I was voted off the Board. I resigned as the registered agent for Film Forward, and if necessary, I hereby reiterate my resignation as registered agent of Film Forward, effective running from July 9th, 2021 forward. My address is 64 Fails Avenue, Barrington, Rhode Island, 02806. So, this is no longer the registered office of the Corporation of Film Forward or the address of its registered agent. I would like the records of the Town of Barrington and the records of the Rhode Island Secretary of State to reflect this and ensure that my resignation from the Board and from being the registered agent is effective from July 9th, 2021 forward. I have repeatedly asked the directors, the current directors of the Film Forward, Lisa Lowenstein, Vincent Wicker, and Braxton Medlin, to submit the proper paperwork with the Rhode Island Secretary of State's office to accurately reflect the true makeup of the current Board of Directors and to note the new registered agent and registered agent's address. But as of the writing of this email, to my knowledge, based on my review of the records on file with the Rhode Island Secretary of State's office pertaining to Film Forward, they have not done so. Furthermore, today, I called the Rhode Island Secretary of State's office and spoke to Diane Zania in the Business Services Division. She told me that I would need to submit evidence of my resignation as the registered agent of Film Forward in email to the Rhode Island Secretary of State's office. Ms. Zania and Mr. Martizian, please accept this email and the attachment as evidence of my resignation, both from the Board of Film Forward and as registered agent, and please maintain this email and its attachment attached here too and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth here with, as a public record pertaining to the official records of the Rhode Island nonprofit corporation Film Forward, ID 001726105. I also ask the Town Council, Town Manager, and Town Clerk of the Town of Barrington to maintain this email and its attachment attached here too and incorporated here with, as a public record on file with the Town of Barrington. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Susannah Holloway. And attached to my email to you today were the official July 9th, 2021, minutes of the Board of Directors meeting, showing that I was voted off and was no longer the registered agent. I have worked as a lawyer at the North Carolina Attorney General's Office for almost twelve years, and making sure that the records of the state government and local governments are accurate is very important to me. It is important to me that the new current Board of Directors of Film Forward file immediately with the Rhode Island Secretary of State's office the paperwork which will set out the current Board and the current registered agent. That is imperative. I know that the town is working with Film Forward. I know that the Town Council is working with Film Forward to put on this film festival, and you're entering into contracts with Film Forward, such as the payment of the police officer detail, which was represented to me by the chief of police as being upwards of $7,000. You need to know who Film Forward is. It's not fair to the public. It's not fair to the Town of Barrington. It's not fair to the Town Council. It's not fair to the townspeople. It's not fair to me. It's not fair to the current Board to not have this accurately reflected in the public records. So, I ask you to please, as you deal with the Board of Film Forward, Braxton Medlin, who just appeared in front of you, Vincent Wicker, who is here, ask them to please make sure that their filings with the Secretary of State's office are accurate and currently reflect the accurate Board of Directors as well as their registered agent.
That's three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak for public comment? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is to discuss an act on the interview process with Board Commission, Board and Commission applicants. This is Counselor Breyer's Agenda Item. Counselor Breyer.
Yes. So, in, in the absence of a formalized policy, we've created some confusion, and I think there are some challenges with transparency and objectivity in terms of the process to apply and be interviewed. And so, I just wanted to formalize a policy so that we can communicate it to the public and be able to be consistent and objective in when and how we interview candidates.
Okay.
So, I, I shared a proposal. We can discuss them point by point or discuss general thoughts on, on such a policy.
Sure. So, my, my view as the, as the person who's responsible for making the agenda is that there are many different factors that come into making an agenda, and in particular, identifying folks for, who are going to be interviewed. Sometimes we have positions that call for specific preference. So, economic development wants a business owner. There's a preference for that. So, if we know someone's not a business owner, then at that point, we might try to wait to see if there might be another business owner. We might also have times when we have a very hot room, and we want to get through it, so we'll put it off. I would oppose this policy because I think it should be up to the President to decide what's on the agenda. The backstop for that is to have members of the council, three members can change what's on the agenda. That's my own view. Sure. Counselor Castel.
Yeah. I, I would tend to, to support discretion. That is part of the function of the council president. I think that some of the issues, what I'd like to explore further, would be where Counselor Breyer has, has seen that we have a, a problem of sorts, of what are we trying to fix? And so, we may be able to tailor or come to some agreement as to practices, but I do think that that power is vested with, with the council president, and I, and I would respect that. I think we have to have someone in, in charge of setting the agenda going forward, and that's clearly the role of the council president.
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed policy so that we remove objectivity in the process. I'm sorry, remove subjectivity in the process.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? The second motion. The next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the composting, excuse me. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the composting proposal. This is Counselor Castel has, this is his Agenda Item, so if you want to take us through that and introduce our guest.
Yes. For some time, and I should first acknowledge that Counselor Breyer has been a driving force behind the composting process and the, the idea of establishing a pilot program in Barrington for composting. It would be a small voluntary pilot program, and in consultation with the farm school, the Barrington Conservation Commission has endorsed the program to be set forth by Mr. Tim Faulkner from the farm school. I think it is, it is an excellent start. It is voluntary, it is modeled on other programs, quite well thought out, and I would, I would turn it over to Mr. Faulkner when the council president is prepared to do so.
Please, Mr. Faulkner, thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Tim Faulkner, 12 Samoset Avenue. So, I, have you all seen the handout? Did you get copies of that?
Yes. Can you just, like, 10,000-foot summarize it so folks in the audience are aware of what it is?
Oh, sure. Yeah, definitely. I think, well, the goal overall is to, I think, increase awareness and participation and education in, in addressing food waste in the town. And so, we're sort of proposing this, you know, after a few months of working with the Conservation Commission and, and others with programs similar to this. We are looking at establishing what's called like a compost hub. It would be a, a drop-off bin located in the central part of the town. In this case, we decided that maybe something along Kent Street, either by the tennis courts or by the pond, and the Department of Public Works said that's okay. And what we would do is really just try and create some awareness as a place to drop off food scraps for residents. And we would ideally have a bike that we could use to collect the scraps and bring it back to the farm and process it, which we do already. We have a drop-off at the farm currently, and that's very successful and doing great, and our compost program is very robust. We have, we started over ten years ago, myself and a couple other parents, collecting at Soham School and then branching out to all the other schools, and that's been a, a big success too, with getting student, student participation, and we hope to continue that again this year if COVID restrictions are lifted, and, and we can collect from the schools. So, I think the overall goal is to kind of jump, jumpstart this in town. I think we all realize this is coming down the pike and that there is going to be at some point probably some form of mandatory food scrap collection by businesses and residences. I mean, who knows when that will happen, but we think this is a good way to increase participation. I don't think this is something we want to, you know, we don't want to be the leaders, I mean, of a town-wide program, but we want to be, help facilitate, you know, maybe so some other businesses can come in and maybe, you know, pick it up from where we, we got things going. So, happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Do you have a question? So, just so folks know, one of the So just so folks know, one of the great things about a composting program is it saves us money. We pay for every ton that we send to the Johnston landfill. We are really good about recycling, more than 50% some months in terms of getting that out of that. We don't pay for that. We make a little bit of money, but the real benefit is cost avoidance because we don't pay to have that treated, the stuff we recycle. A big chunk of what we do send to the landfill is food waste, and this is an opportunity for us to save some money. This is what's been talked about as a pilot program, and it's a great program, in my opinion, based on what you've read. The farm school folks have been doing this already for years. Really impressive. They weigh what they get from the different schools. They track it. It's, you know, very impressive, and this is a good start for us to explore whether this is a system that could work. So any questions, comments? Nope. Does someone want to make a motion?
I would move that we fully fund the compost pilot program as set forth and endorsed by the Barrington Conservation Commission to the tune of, I believe we had $5,100?
I think, how much did we have in that?
$5,000.
$5,000.
$5,100. Okay, $5,000 even.
Second? Okay. A motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the allocation of town council contingency funds to support the Barrington Heritage Hall of Fame. And ask our town manager, Jim Cunha, tell us about this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, in 2020, we began the Barrington Heritage Hall of Fame. We had our first, a selection committee was formed, and they made selections of Barrington residents, both alive and deceased, that have contributed to our community. We did it again this year. Unfortunately, in 2020, we couldn't install our inaugural class because of COVID. The committee did meet this year in 2021. We now have a total of 25 members of the Barrington Heritage Hall of Fame. Because last year, we could not adequately show them our gratitude for what they've done for our community, I would like to do a combined ceremony this year sometime in the fall. It was not budgeted in the budget. There'd be, there are 13 members that remain alive. Their plaques would be about $110. There'd be a large plaque displayed in town hall with all the names listed on it for about $500. Engraving would cost approximately $200, and I'd like to have a reception. So what I'm asking is for the town council to allocate $3,000 from the council contingency fund to support the recognition of the Class of 2020 and 2021 Barrington Heritage Hall of Fame.
Okay. Any questions? Sure, go ahead.
I'm curious why it wasn't budgeted and it's coming from council contingency funds?
I couldn't understand the question. I'm sorry.
I'm curious why it wasn't budgeted and...
Because I didn't budget it. I take full responsibility for that. Council contingency funds are currently a little over $20,000.
Okay. Any other questions? Sure. Vice President Hum.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say this, I think this is a great initiative that Town Manager Cunha came up with. I was fortunate to serve on the 2020 Committee, and the stories that you hear from people from all areas of the town about people who helped to build our town, both in the past and currently, is pretty amazing. And it's interesting that it's on the agenda tonight because we talked about the DEI Committee, which is, I think, in large part, talking about our town's future and some important aspects of that. The Heritage Hall of Fame is something that honors and represents our town's past and how we got here, and also our present because of the people who are still in town making contributions. So I think this is a great thing. I'm fully in favor of this, so I encourage everyone else to do the same.
Okay. All right. So let me just get that number. Make a motion to allocate $3,000 from the town council contingency fund to support recognition of the Barrington Heritage Hall of Fame classes of 2020 and 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Great. Next item on our agenda is, it was to discuss an act on a contract extension for our resiliency planning consultant, Kim Jacobs, but it was pointed out to us, thank you, that this is a, needs to be rebid. So we will have to put this out for rebid, and we'll come back, maybe at our next meeting, hopefully. Okay. And we'll have a resiliency planning consultant. Next item on our agenda is to discuss the street parking update, and our town manager, Jim Cunha, will take us through that.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, due to some parking concerns, we've undertaken a comprehensive parking study for the town of Barrington. What we've discovered is there's a lot of streets that are no parking, that could allow parking. There are even more streets that allow parking that shouldn't. The NFPA standards for parking is that you need 20 feet for emergency vehicles. That's not only to get the vehicle through, but also to put out the outriggers for a ladder that would have to go up. So based on that, we're recommending, we will recommend to you that a 26-foot-wide street be allowed one side of the road parking, a 32-foot wide street be allowed parking on both sides of the street, and anything under 26 feet would not have any parking allowed on the street. So we are about one-third through the town. The police department is undertaking this. When they're out late at night, they're measuring roads for us. So I expect by September, I'll be able to present you with a list of the streets that need, should, recommend have no parking, and the streets that we recommend should have parking. And I'll also have a map available so you can see how they impact their various neighborhoods.
Great. Any questions? Councilor Breyer.
I'm just curious if there have been instances of, so the streets that currently allow parking but are narrower than 26 feet, if we've ever had instances when a fire truck has had trouble getting through, getting to a scene or responding to an emergency?
There have been a few where, and I'll let the chief speak to this, but I know of a couple of instances where there's been fireworks or a large gathering and people park on both sides of the road. Typically, in the interim, we can, if everyone parks on one side of the road, we can allow emergency vehicles to get through, but that will not allow us to put down a ladder if necessary. So that's why we would want permanently no parking.
Right. And as I recall, when we bought that ladder truck, one of the advantages to the more modern truck was that it didn't require as much space to put those outriggers, because before, it would have been even wider, so that you can't put that ladder in the air unless those are down because you're putting the firefighters in danger. So any other questions? Vice President Hum.
Yeah, I just have a question, only because it's come up a couple of times from a few people in terms of feedback. I assume most streets are uniform in terms of their width, but people have said, well, what if the streets are narrower in one area and wider in another area? What do you do?
We're going to the minimum, the widest, excuse me, the less width is what we're measuring too, because that's the one that we want to make sure is safe. So if it's 30 feet in one area and 22 in another, we're counting it as a 22-foot.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
I have something. I have a comment first and then a question. I think the comment is that with any kind of public health emergencies, I think we've all learned over the last 16 months, our public health and public safety issue is that you really don't know you're successful until you're not successful. And so there's a real danger in getting comfort with saying there has been no accident that's occurred, or there haven't been injuries that have taken place, because that's not to say that they wouldn't take place in the future. So I just think it's really important to keep in mind that with public safety and public health, that we have to take the precautions that are suggested by the fire chief, by fire standards. My second question is in terms of the length that's required for parking. So if you have, you may have a street that's 26 feet wide, how long does each parking space need to be to adequately access driveways, fire hydrants, et cetera?
Typically, we don't mark parking spaces. We have on Narragansett Avenue, but on most side streets, it'd be a very expensive proposition to allocate. So it's kind of what they fill up, you know, what they allow themselves. You would hope that people wouldn't impede access to driveways and that type of thing where there is parking allowed, but generally, that's self-regulated.
Okay. And just one more question in terms of, are you, though you're not marking the spaces, are you keeping track of how many additional parking spaces or how, what the reduction of parking spaces may be?
We haven't done that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on resolutions, and the sole resolution is one, authorizing the town manager to execute and deliver the Carmelite Monastery Purchase and Sales Agreement. Any questions on this? Nope. Okay. I make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented. Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
President Cal, could I just give a quick update on the Carmelite Monastery? We're in the process of doing all our due diligence. We're going to request an extension. The survey is not going to be completed till sometime in early August. Right now, due diligence period ends this Friday, so we're working with Andy Tights, who's working with the diocese attorney to get that due diligence period extended. We're also completing the Phase One environmental inspection and the building inspection. So those are the ongoing projects that we hope to have resolved before we have a closing.
Great. Thank you.
Just one quick question.
Sure.
How long is the extension we're requesting for due diligence?
I'm sorry, how long?
What is, what's the length of the extension we're requesting?
It looks like August 15 should be sufficient.
Thanks.
Next item on our agenda, we have no bids. This is to discuss an act on ordinances. This will be the introduction. So we have two phases to any ordinance. First, we introduce an ordinance, and if it is introduced, we set a public hearing date, and then we hold a public hearing date at our next meeting or at a later meeting. And the first item is 2021-15, An Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 33, Section 33-35, Hospital, Medical and Dental Coverage. And does anyone want to make a motion for that one?
I have a question. There's an amendment I was going to suggest, and I think it would benefit from the solicitor being able to look at it in the interim, so I just wanted to bring it up now.
Okay.
And that's for the exclusion for employees who are 26 and could be on a parent's insurance plan? That that, that they only be excluded if their parents live in Rhode Island? Because if their parents live out of state, the insurance plan that they could be on could be an awful insurance plan for somebody who lives in Rhode Island to have. And so I think they should only be excluded if the plan they could be on is a Rhode Island plan.
Okay. Amy, did you get that? I'm just thinking...
I got about 80% of that.
They want only, only for people with parents living in Rhode Island.
Okay.
Okay. So that's something that you can look into in the interim?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
With that, I'll move to introduce an ordinance amendment to Chapter 33, Section 33-35, Hospital, Medical and Dental Coverage, and schedule a public hearing for September 13, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item on our agenda is 2021-16, Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 63, Section 63-8, License Class Number and Fee. This is Councilor Breyer's. Did you want to...
Yes, this came up a few months ago, and then the council ended up requesting special legislation to allow for this to potentially happen. I know that we've heard from the community, and there are going to be people who will want to speak to it, but I'd like to introduce this so we can have the public hearing and have that discussion.
My own view is that we should allow them to work together, because it sounds like there's been an overture made to the party who wants the liquor license, and we can hopefully facilitate that. But before we introduce this, once we introduce it and vote on it, we have a lot less power to bring the parties together than before we introduce and vote on it. So I'd recommend that we hold off on this, but if you wanted to make a motion, please go ahead.
So I would add, we could always hold the public hearing, and if we haven't been able to get the parties together and come up with something that works for both of them, we can then table the vote, postpone the end. But this restaurant has waited many months to try to have this hearing and obtain a license, and I think delaying it more is harming local business. And so I'd like to introduce it, and if we need to table it when it comes time to vote on the ordinance amendment, we can table it then, but not preemptively delay.
Okay. You want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Section 63-8, License Class BVL, increasing the number of BVL from four to five, and schedule a public hearing for September 13, 2021.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
And actually, for either of you, have either of you had communications indicating whether the business owner is open to any overtures or reconciliations or collaboration with the community folks who have raised some of the issues?
I have not heard from a couple.
I've spoken with them, and they've said that they're willing to delay the time when they would begin serving. They talked about the potential to not operate the convenience store portion. They have seemed willing to work. I'm not sure about any of the specifics in the request from Montessori, but they have seemed interested in doing what's needed to make this happen.
Okay. No, thank you. And just as a comment, I think a month and a half is a decent amount of time for them to continue their discussions.
Yeah, and I'll quit on this. I just, every time we introduce an ordinance, there's some cost involved. We have to advertise the ordinance, and so I'd prefer that we wait until they had kind of gotten together rather than doing it now. But a motion has been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that's three. Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, it's three to two. That motion carries. So that will be on our September agenda. Next item on our agenda is the public hearing, and that is 2021-14, Renewal of Ordinance Declaration of Emergency. I am opening the public hearing into this, and first, I would ask our assistant solicitor, the state of emergency that we have declared, is that dependent on the governor's state of emergency?
It is, and that was recently extended. If you give me a moment, I can pull up the expiration date for that. I believe the budget that was recently enacted for the state gave the authority to the governor to extend the state of emergency no later than September 1st.
Okay.
So the towns and the town mayor... So the towns and the town managers and councils declaration of emergency is dependent on that authority.
And, and once that authority expires, if it expires on September 1st and there's no other changes, then ours would expire.
Correct.
Okay. Well, we have set ours to expire on September 20th, which is what we've been doing so that we don't expire before we hold a meeting. But it will expire on its own if the governor's does. If something changes in the interim, and the governor, you know, if the, one of these variants gets worse, and the state of emergency is extended, and we vote for this, it will extend. Does anyone from the public want to be heard on this? Okay, anyone from the council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was hoping we can have an update on the timeline to have hybrid capability, or at least livestream capability, because as the pandemic kind of ebbs and flows a little with variants, many people who have been participating may, may not feel safe or feel comfortable. And so I just want to...
We, we have signed the contract for the initial installation of the equipment. I'm not sure it will be ready by September 13th. It may very well be ready, and we'll be able to adjust from there. I think the question before the council is, do they want to have virtual meetings? There's no requirement to have virtual meetings. You can simply have in-person meetings where anyone that participates. You have three options. We do it the way we did it tonight. You could do it as a hybrid meeting with, you have to be here, but any public can participate virtually. Or you can just simply livestream it so they can be informed and watch it at home.
Okay. That's, go ahead.
One other quick comment for the council to consider. You may know that the House passed legislation that would have required hybrid meetings. The Senate didn't pass it, but it's my understanding the General Assembly is coming back in September. So we'll have to see what, if any, action is taken in the future on this topic.
Okay. Yeah. When, when and if you have sort of plans for how that would be, it'd be great if you could just share those with us because I'm trying to picture how we would do it. You know, when I was doing the Zoom meetings, I would have a big screen here and a big screen here, and I couldn't do that and look at the, the folks who were live and also look at the folks who were there.
Yeah, there's, there's additional monitors that will be installed, at least one additional monitor. Eventually, we're probably going to get one right in front of you so that you can look straight down. But initially, it'll be that one over there and another one over here that you'll be able, someone that wants to speak virtually will be up on that monitor. And, and their, their sound will be through our system, not through your earpiece or your own laptop.
Right. Great. Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Okay.
Actually, Mike, can I ask a question? So if we are to make, we're obviously just voting on the declaration of emergency now, when would we make a decision on how we conduct our meetings going forward? I would be fully supportive of a hybrid model. I think it's, we're limiting accessibility. There's, thank you all for staying and for participating, but there are many fewer people here tonight than have traditionally been there. I know personally, my husband was almost called out of town, and I was going to be juggling babysitting an hour before the meeting began. So if, if I'm dealing with it and I have a requirement to be here, I know that members of the public are not going to be able to participate in the same way that they may like to, emergency or not. So that, I would just, I would be fully supportive of a hybrid version.
Okay.
One of the problems is, right now, every town hall in the United States of America is trying to install equipment for hybrid meetings. So I have little confidence in their projected delivery time.
I will make a motion to adopt 2021-14, renewal of declaration of emergency as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item is to set our agenda for our September 13th meeting. We will be discussing the DEI Committee and interviewing additional candidates and setting the staggered terms and selecting a chair and vice chair. We will be acting on the two ordinances which were introduced tonight. We will also be discussing community after COVID. That's Vice President Humm's agenda item, and then a discussion on the minimum wage that was requested by Counselor Breyer. Anything else you want to add to that?
Yes, I, we discussed earlier, talking about how we can promote to get more engagement and input from the community regarding plans for the Carmelite Monastery. And if I can just discuss a little bit the minimum wage discussion that I'd like to have next month?
Sure.
Or actually, in September. So when, when I brought this up at our budget meeting, it seemed like we were all in support of some level of policy to set a higher minimum wage at $15 an hour for town employees. And I know that it'll probably take a couple meetings to figure out how that policy is structured. What I'd like to do at our September meeting is to have a discussion about the questions we all have and the data that we would like to see in order to make an informed decision before we talk about specific proposals or evaluate anything. I think just a discussion on what's the information we'd, we'd like to have in order to make an informed polit, policy decision. So if folks can just give some thought to that before the meeting, and then we have that discussion in September.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We made it. Thanks, everybody.